Thursday, February 8th, 2024, 7:00 PM. We've got the meeting of the planning board to order. Uh, this is, the Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak may or must raise their hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay for the born TV. If anyone has audio or visual recording, please acknowledge at this time. Uh, I suggest that people, they turn down their ringers on their phones and go mute them.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Uh, first item on the meeting minutes, uh, the minutes of 1:11:24.
Mr. Chairman, I move that they be adopted as drafted.
Second that.
Has a motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion to adopt as written? From the board, from the audience, seeing and hearing none. Requires roll call.
John?
Yes.
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 Liz?
Yes.
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Is she on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Catherine?
It is.
And yes, it passed. Next up is the meeting minutes of 1:25:24.
Um, I, Chairman, um, think we should make a note that Judy Froman, is this the one where we discussed? Yeah, 21 Canal Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, above Scott Froman, we should just make a note that Judy Froman made comments and presented a letter to the...
Yeah. Yep. So, would you like to make that correction on that?
Yeah.
I don't entertain a motion with that, to approve with that correction?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written with the addition.
For the correction, it's directed by Jim.
That's made by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second by Doc. Any further discussion on the motion from the board, the audience, seeing, hearing, none? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Jean? I mean, Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you. And yes, it passes. Next on the agenda is the application for extension is number 062016C, 246 MacArthur Boulevard, MAP 24 Parcels, 192223. And the application is to request for an extension. It's for a two-year extension. This is very similar to the one we did at our last meeting because of the building constraints, timing. So, anybody like to make a motion to?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to continue, extend it for two years?
Yes.
Second. Second by Jim. Any discussion on that motion from the board, from the audience, seeing, hearing, none? Requires roll call.
Yes.
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 Amanda?
Yep.
Catherine?
Yes.
And yes, thank you. Any comments on that counsel at all?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate the courtesy of, uh, of seeing you guys, uh, soon.
Okay, thank, thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Take care. Next is on the agenda is 79 Mayflower Road, access to termination continued from 1:25:24. We have a letter from the applicant to continue this for, to March 28th of 2024.
And that's the correct day?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me just double check.
Yeah, I just...
Yes. That'd be the second, our second meeting in March.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I move that we, um, continue the 79 Mayflower Road access to termination until March 28th meeting?
I have a motion to continue to March 28th. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any discussion from the board, from the audience, seeing and hearing none? Requires a roll call.
Yes.
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 Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Yes. It passes. It's continued to March 28th. Next on the agenda, the proposed zoning bylaw updates and discussion. Starting with, let's do section 4120 accessory dwelling amendments. Again, we've been looking at this off and on for a few months. So, uh, I'd like to take a little look at this and see how we're progressing. Hey, staff, just, just posed a meeting with, um, the ZBA. You want to make comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Uh, on February 5th, I sent a memo to the zoning board of appeals, the Bourne Housing Partnership, and the Bourne Housing Trust uh, to have a joint meeting with the planning board on Thursday, February 22nd, um, beginning at 7:00 uh, to discuss the amendments to the accessory dwelling section of the zoning bylaw, which is section 4120.
Okay.
Is this meeting, is it Zoom only or hybrid or?
It'll be hybrid.
Hybrid.
Yeah.
Just good.
And do you have, do you have any questions or comments on the zoning? Again, we've, we've got some redlined changes, so, Liz?
Um, I was going to ask about the 90-day.
Yep.
John, at one point you had sort of suggested that maybe a shorter timeframe might be better. I don't know if, you know, if you're still with that. But I did talk to some of my traveling nurse connections and some of them were saying that sometimes they have short-term contracts, like 30 days. Or a 90-day contract might get can't, um, truncated, like to 60 days. So, I was wondering if we might want to move, maybe not back to 30, but maybe to 60 instead of 90 days. I don't know if that's a, a name, a compromise that would be acceptable.
John?
Yes, I, I think there's definitely room for compromise. Uh, first, trying to create some more affordable housing by virtue of the size of the unit and, um, then also to, uh, address the housing needs. So, we have, um, affordable housing, we have summer help workers, that might be fonder a 90-day. And then there are others, as in the traveling nurse and so forth. But I agree, I mean, if someone was able to negotiate to get out of their lease early, there's nothing that would prevent them from doing that. The residents still did a 90-day lease as they were supposed to and, uh, so, I'm not against a 60 or 90-day. I think, uh, 90-day might be a more palatable, uh, term for a bylaw change.
Right, and, and then people deal with it, with their lease agreements.
Yes.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Yeah, we'll meet.
I have one other.
Yeah, Liz, go ahead.
Which, um, I noticed that we used to have somewhere, um, that you could only have one accessory dwelling. And we took that out. And I wondered, is that something we wanted to do?
Jen?
Um, that is in section 4120 where it says accessory dwelling, it says a special permit. Oh, actually, we'll have to take that out. Um, that's where the one accessory dwelling is, uh, referenced in there.
Okay, which?
It's in like the, uh, right before 4121.
Okay.
It's in the paragraph itself, so I don't, I mean, that wording...
I have to look in the, the actual bylaw or is it on here?
It's, yeah, yeah.
Right, right on before we went to, yeah, special permit authorizing one accessory dwelling. So, that would be changed?
Right there.
Okay.
Right there.
No, it, it's somewhere, it was, thank you, Jen, I don't know why I couldn't see that. Somewhere in the original, somewhere in this redlining, there was a reference to being one. But as long as it says one somewhere, I think that's fine. I'm good with that.
We could certainly move that down to like 4121A, so it's really clear.
I was just going to say, I do think people may wonder, does that seem logical to you?
We could put that, sure.
I don't know.
Sure.
It's, it's kind of, this is a new territory for us, isn't it?
I mean... You could, I, you know, the, the, where 4120 is, you could, um, have like, you know, the purpose of an accessory dwelling is, you know, to increase the availability of, um, year-round housing opportunities for residents and have some, sort of a little explanation in there.
Like a mission statement.
I think that's not a bad idea because just our discussion, we covered, you know, three, four things that, you know, might be covered in this.
Right.
Um, and I think balancing all those things is what we're trying to do.
Yep.
And then, um, 4121A, I'll insert the one accessory per lot. Is permitted, something like that, okay. Per lot. And I just, I wanted to say that I went through, um, the Cape Cod Commission has a lot of details about definitions and things like that. So, I went through that and that's where some of these, um, inserts have come into.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
And then on the 90-day, I, I know that there was, um, the statement of, uh, no more than four leases per year. So, I think that I might have accidentally taken that out.
Notes?
So, I don't, is it, is it?
It's on C, 4122C.
Yeah, C.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like an either/or for the periods? Or both?
So, pertinent to what we were just discussing, if, if someone gets out of their lease and they're in it for 60 days and then you, you might end up with five leases in a year, would that be?
Well, if we, if, if we did it, if we look at the 90-day thing, we were talking about earlier. That's, that's, you get the place for three months, that's four times a year. So, it'd be no more than four times a year, what Jen just said. But at the same time, if we brought it down to 60 days, then they could get, we'd have to change it to the five.
John?
I think, you know, the language that, no more than four 90-day rentals a year, uh, most 90-day rentals would either be a one-time seasonal worker or a traveling nurse or someone in that capacity. And I think in most cases, the other nine months of the year would probably be a single lease.
Gotcha.
There are some people waiting for their new housing and some of the bigger projects that may need a shorter 90-day. But I would hope that the number one priority would be to provide affordable year-round housing. And then next would be for seasonal workers and maybe traveling, uh, nurse, et cetera.
And that's hard to police.
I was just going to say, how are you going to enforce that when some people might not even have a, a lease arrangement? Or is that a required part of the ADU? They might have a tenant at will situation.
I have a question.
It's a good question.
Amanda?
Hi, um, why even have that language in there? Like, no more, no more than four? Like, why even have that in there? Like, just given the, you know, seasonal people, you don't know, like, on any given year, you might have more than, you know, six people that are interested in staying in, in the accessory dwelling a year. But that kind of language would bar somebody from being able to help, like, the seasonal people who might need to have, like, less terms, um, or less time in the house. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the problem or not, it's not the problem, but I think one of the things we're wrestling with is how to address not having, like, Airbnb short-term.
I was just going to say, yeah.
And, and how to, you know, how to state it so that we're trying to say, you know, we want you to veer on the side of longer-term occupancy.
We're just trying to discourage renting a place out many weekends in a row.
Yeah, okay.
So...
I guess that makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it, it, there may be another way, but that's why, you know?
Yeah.
Well, this, the seasonal workers, I know from working at the Seacrest, they average between 90 and 120 days that they're here because that's all their visa's good for.
That makes sense, yeah.
So, they, they start coming in, in May, uh, May, June, July, and August. But then they offset people coming in June, July, August, and September, so they can work all the way up to October.
Mm-hmm.
So, that their average is between 90 and 120 days that they're here.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
John?
I think we're just talking about a minimum 90 days, so they could do five months, six months. And there are really, um, only four 90-day periods in a year anyway, so...
Right.
Um, I think it does cover it pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because we're trying, I think we're trying to do is not have, to give you that accessory dwelling and then you Airbnb it every weekend because you're trying to make workforce housing or affordable housing for year-round residents. So, yeah, I think that...
That's the goal.
Right, that, that, that's exactly, exactly. Anybody else have any questions or comments on that?
I just had a question for Jen. Jen, you said something about the Cape Cod Commission, they have certain language. Do they have certain language in, i- is it pretty much cover the Cape for Airbnb versus, you know, 60-day rental, 90-day rental?
That was, this was the language that was in their mo- recommendation.
I mean, they're covering all the, they're covering the whole Cape, so I, I think they're kind of consistent.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And again, with the accessory dwelling, what Yarmouth just passed theirs, that they think at the last town meeting, so we're the last one on the Cape to get it by right. So, it's not like we're breaking new ground, right? You know, so we've been holding off on this, looking at this, talking about this for years and years and years. And I think it's about time we, we address it, so, so I appreciate that.
That chart that you handed out originally must have changed a bit then, right?
Mm-hmm.
No? Has it changed, is Yarmouth?
Yeah, that...
Oh, it will change now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I checked their website, I don't, I didn't see it changed yet.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments with the affordable housing? You know, just throw it through, uh, Jen, and, uh, we'll, we'll get them moved on and then we'll meet on the 22nd. We'll have a joint meeting?
Yes.
We'll, we'll try our best to have that happen.
Yep.
Can I just ask a question about the procedural requirements? So, all of that is redlined except for the building commissioner slash chief zoning officer shall administer and enforce the provisions of this section, but there aren't any. So, I was kind of confused.
Yeah.
Oh, so you don't want that? Or do you want it? Or should there be any?
Provisions of the bylaw?
It's, it means this section of all of the 4120 section, so maybe I should put that at the very top and just get rid of this whole 4123.
It certainly isn't clear. I'll, I'll put it that way. It's not clear, yeah.
Just relocate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need section 4123 at all?
No, she's going to, she's going to put that to the front, right?
Okay. So, procedural requirements can go away then?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So, that's good for accessory dwelling? We move on to the next? Okay.
Yes.
Next is, uh, section 1238, site plan review, traffic and circulation plan, remove 25 from CMR fire code reference. Jen, you want to make comment on that? I know this comes from the fire department?
Yes, it does. And, and you'll see on, on the handout that I gave, um, it really, it's, it's 527 CMR 25. And so, uh, it's just removing, um, deleting that reference to the CMR 25. Um, the redline, it didn't show up in the copies that we made for you, just, yeah. Yeah, so you'll see it in the next one. Because in the zoning bylaw, it says 527 CMR 25.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, that relates to, um, the change that you made in the subdivision regs back of the, back of the fall.
Yep. Anybody else got any discussion on that?
Just a quick question on that. And I know down at Woods Hole, they have, um, professors and, uh, specialized people coming from all over the world. Now, how do they put them up for the, for the six months of the year?
Uh, Woods Hole Oceanographic and, and MBL, they have houses available for staff. They have a whole bunch of houses in the Woods Hole, Falmouth area.
Okay.
So, they, they do provide, they have a lot of housing. Anything else on section 1238 for the, remove 25 from the CMR fire code? Next we're going to talk about is, uh, section 1333, is a change special permit time lapse from two to three years. Do you want to make mention of this, Jen?
Uh, yes. So, in, uh, chapter 40A, they actually changed the time lapse for a special permit to three years. Uh, it used to be two years. So, uh, this section is under the enforcement. It's section 1242, uh, paragraph one, I guess. Um, and it would change this to be three years in the zoning bylaw to be consistent with chapter 40A. The board can keep the two years if you wish and you want an applicant to come back after two years. Um, so you can make it more restrictive, but three years is generally the timeline now because projects take longer.
Okay. And that's, that's the reason we put this on there is to be consistent with the state.
Mm-hmm.
Again, we can keep it at two, but like the last two meetings, we extended it, you know, to two. So, we're just, just trying to be consistent with that. That's all.
And that was the document you sent us, that you, you had a section highlighted for the, that said three years. That was the state?
Yes.
I was just trying to find it, but don't bother.
Oh, yep, I have that if you want to.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I concur with the chairman. Like you said, the last two meetings, we've had extensions requested.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it just seems to make sense to go to that. Keep it consistent, everybody's on the same field, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, we're, we're going to, all these changes and stuff, we still have to have the public hearing, but at least...
Yep.
You, you, just minor modifications that we, we have found along the way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the next one is section 2821, table of allowable uses, change from the function standards and special permit criteria for home occupation use from C-section 4120 to C-section 4110. Now, this one, it came up when we were looking at home occupation use. And on page 47, uh, in the zoning bylaw, it states home occupation by special permit, C-section 4120.
Mm-hmm.
You go to 4120, 4120's accessory dwelling. Above it is 4110.
Right.
The home occupation. So, all we're doing is just changing that to direct you to the right section of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
It's just a correction to the bylaw. We, because we were looking at, and we, and we knew that the home occupation was 4110 over the years, and we just looked at it. But now we look at the numbers and they don't line up. So, it's just a correction to line that up. So, yeah, so on page 47, under home occupation, special permits is 41, C-section 4120. And then you go to page 138, section 4100 accessory uses, you go to 4110, and that's the home occupation. And then we're just trying to line that up.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other?
Well, I can check with town council to see if it can be a Scrivener error, but I don't know. So, if not, it would need an article.
Yeah. And, and that's, we're not trying to change the bylaw to make anything, you know, so...
My recollection in the past, Jen, is that we've had other similar situations, and you probably remember that. It was a simple thing like that. It was in the wrong section. We just moved it, so we didn't have to have a public hearing on that particular item. It was just changing the section.
We could just tell them.
Hopefully.
Yeah, we, we'd announce it, but most of the guys know, like Zach and those guys that look before us, they knew that these were out of line before.
Yep. But we just, we just want to bring that up, discuss that, you know, we do find these minor errors from time to time. We just want to make those corrections as, as we come across them.
Well, I actually, when I originally saw it, I thought it might be, um, us adjusting to work-at-home things that are new in the world, you know? But I actually just read through it, and I'm like, yeah, seems to cover it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Scrivener error, so we just correct it, yeah.
But we'll, we'll throw it to town council, see which way it goes. But just so you have an idea, if there's something like that changes, that's the reason. And the next one is section, anybody else on the, do you have any discussion on that? Next is E-section 3343, traffic management district, remove June 1st, 2020 sunset date for interim egress control. Jen, you got the floor on this one, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so this is section 3343 for interim egress control. And that, um, this section of the bylaw, the purpose of it is to actually, um, control the number of curb cuts that are along, um, the traffic management district, which is Sinek Highway and Sandwich Road. And this was adopted originally in 1996, and then it was updated in 2006. And they put this sunset clause in here until June 1st of 2020, or if earlier, until the opening of a limited access highway connecting the Mid-Cape Highway Route 6 with MacArthur Boulevard or Route 25. All development in the traffic management district is su- is subject to, um, the following criteria, which, which has a lot of, um, restrictions for safety and, um, sight lines and, and all of that. So, this would be just taking out the date and just saying until the opening of that. So, it would not have a sunset that we have a date on.
So, we're just removing the sunset?
Sunset date, yes, yes. Yeah, and, um, the intent of that section is to aid in reducing the impacts, um, of new access points within the traffic management district.
So, we're trying to limit the number of curb cuts in there.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the reason for that. So, we take the sunset out.
Just take it out completely.
Mm-hmm.
It's the sun, the sunset, until June 1st, 2020, or if...
Just until it happens, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's smart. I mean, obviously, there aren't going to be fewer curb cuts. No one's closing them.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on E-section 3343 from the, for the audience? Seeing and hearing none. I see that we're down to number five.
Motion to adjourn. That was the last one.
Motion made, whoever.
Just, um, the... So, all of these proposed bylaws need to have a public hearing with them.
Sorry.
All right, yep.
The Wednesday, we have to have a public hearing. So, March 14th is our meeting, and it has to be in by the 15th. So, we're asking, yeah, for the warrant.
Yeah, the warrant closes on the 15th.
So, for our staff, I'm asking if we can make this on a Wednesday, March 6th. Because this room is taken on Thursday.
On the 7th.
On the 7th. So, if we can make our regularly scheduled meeting Wednesday, March 6th, if we can zoom it, you know, we'll, we'll do the hybrid meeting as well. But that way, we can have the public hearing on that and do it in a timely fashion and give our staff time to get those submitted into town hall.
Would we have a meeting on the 14th as well?
Nope, nope.
Okay, so that would be instead?
It, it would be replacing the 14th meeting.
Okay.
Unless something comes in, but if, if we can put it out the 20th, we will. But that would just change the meeting from the 14th to the 6th. That's all we're trying to do.
Okay.
So, if you see the, the agenda come out for the 6th, that's the, it's, that's why it is. I don't entertain a motion, we just move it to that, so we have...
Just letting you know, I will not be here for the 14th or whatever date.
Or the 6th.
Or, or the 6th or any other meetings in March.
Okay. That's right, that's right. Well, you can, you can zoom in on it.
Yeah, I think I'll zoom in while I'm in Florida.
You're in Florida. So, I'll do...
Dan, I actually won't be here on the 6th.
Dan, I actually won't be here on the 6th and I cannot zoom in.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to show you have a quorum.
We will, we will.
All right.
Yep, because all we need is five.
Okay.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Wait, are you here?
I'm not here in March.
Now, we're down to five.
I'm here.
I am here.
One, two, three, four, we have five and we'll pull in an alternate.
Um, I actually won't be, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Amanda, we have a second.
Oh, no, no, you're going to puppy, you're not going anywhere.
Yeah, that's actually six.
Amanda had to just give us a little jab.
Yeah, that's it, I heard that, I got that. So, I entertain a motion, we...
Just for clarity, zooming in doesn't count for a quorum.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it does.
All right, fine.
Yeah, so you can, you can, on the road, wherever you are.
Yes.
You're on there, you're part of the quorum.
Okay.
So, I understand the motion, we make our meeting from the 14th to Wednesday, March 6th.
I'll entertain that, I mean, I'll make that motion.
Jim makes that motion?
Back in.
Seconded by Liz, any further discussion from the board? For the audience, seeing and hearing none, a roll call?
Yes.
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 Amanda?
Yep.
Catherine?
Yeah.
Yes, it just goes, and then there was a motion to adjourn, it was seconded, all in favor?
All right.
We don't need a roll call from the chairman.
Well, I would, but it's unanimous.